All right, good evening, everyone. It was my pleasure tonight to be part of our recognition. We like to celebrate first one of our staff members. Ms. Carla Pennachar was recently selected and recognized by the Speech and Theater Association of Missouri as the 2019 Wayne Brown Outstanding Speech and Theater Teacher for the entire state of Missouri. So let's give her a big round of applause.[41.14][41.14](APPLAUSE). When you go to our tremendous productions you see at the high school, her team is responsible for all the sets, the lighting, then all the supporting things that make those shows as great as they are, and they consistently win Blue Star Awards for those prep work and make part of the overall production. So theater program's tremendous program, and she's a big part of that. Let's give her another round of applause.[67.06][67.06](APPLAUSE). Awkward pause there. All right.[75.11][75.11](LAUGHTER). I shook her hand before she got here, so that's good. All right, so next we want to recognize one of our very own board members. You may have seen it reported recently that Ms. Ruth Johnson was recognized at the Missouri School Boards Association Conference just a few weeks ago as the Carter Ward Excellence and Advocacy recipient. And what that means is she's been heavily involved for several years in advocating for students both locally and across the state. Part of the effort of that group is to, her efforts has been getting the Cass County Kids' First Group started, which is a conglomeration of all 10 county school districts working together on legislative issues. So she's not only mobilized folks here in Ray Peck but across the county, and then she's been actively at the state and attending federal lobbying and advocacy events as well. So we also have a nice award here that MSBA gave her. Hang on. Let's get that in the picture as well.[133.38][133.38](LAUGHTER). Tons of extra hours there, extra phone calls and emails and trips to Jeff City have been involved in this over time, and it was well-deserved reward. So thank you for all you do.[146.44][146.44](APPLAUSE).
All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Is there any public comments tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay. Moving on to informational items, the guidance and counseling program review, Dr. Hoffman and Dr. Barr.
All right, good evening. Well, to start off, there are a few fun pictures that our counselors wanted to make sure to share with you, just highlighting a very few of the many ways in which the counseling program throughout the district at all levels really positively impacts kids and our families. So you'll see kids role-playing, how to problem-solve, and work through different conflict. You see class teachers who are providing social skills lessons that our counselors are heavily involved in. There's a buddy bench installation for kids who might just need a friend at recess. That's Scott Dobson assisting the leadership team of students that our counselor works with at Peculiar. Our new student orientation at one of our middle schools, and watchdog program that our counselors are also in many cases very heavily involved in coordinating. So just again, just a taste of so many of the wonderful things that do go on within our counseling program in our schools. So. Yes, sorry. All right, so there were many folks who contributed to our program review this year. As always, the team members in general who met several times to go over it and put the proposal together include Dr. Volker, Dr. Barr, and myself, and our counselor executive team members from elementary, middle, and high school. So Latasha Robinson, who is the counselor at Peculiar, Larry King, who is the counselor at East Middle School, and Cheryl Gray, our counselor at the high school. There are many ways in which our program impacts students and their families. So just a few to mention, our counselors and the programs that they run and facilitate support the academic, career, and personal and social development of each student. So the whole student is taken into account with so many of the different efforts that they are the head of. They deliver their counseling curriculum itself. They plan individually with our students. They provide responsive services to students' needs, and systems of support in general they are key players with. In particular, the tiered roles through our multiple tiers or multi-tiered system of support. Partnering with community entities is a big part of what our counselors help us to do. That includes Ray Peck Cares. That helps them to respond specifically to student and family needs that are particular to each. That looks like sometimes Adopt a Family, Back to School Fair, caring about nutrition, Wicked Food Bags, and so many others. Our counselors at the K-8 level also serve as building 504 coordinators and further assist students in accessing academics and meeting those needs. Counselors provide support when intervening with trauma, and we know how multi-layered that is and its impact, and how that looks and the way it affects our students, both academically and behaviorally. They work closely with our mental health professionals in the district, as well as our district behavior interventionists. Our school counselors also work with their building focus facilitators, just in general, to provide that wraparound support as a team to meet students' social, emotional needs. Counselors, of course, provide curriculum, as mentioned before, that assists our students in a variety of areas. In particular, they do a lot of focusing on bullying prevention and suicide awareness and prevention. We started this past year, thanks to our counselors and the team, evidence-based programs like Signs of Suicide and the evidence-based program Second Step, which is a social and emotional learning curriculum that is taught on a regular basis throughout each week to students at our K-8 Success Academy. And Dr. Barr's going to share with you a bit about previous goals.
Thank you. Good evening. So in looking at previous year's goals, this group has done very, very well. And so previous goal number one was that by the end of last year, our district IIR score will increase to 80%. So the IIR is an individual review that is voluntary for school districts to do, is provided by the state, and it has the counselors assess their program in five different areas: program foundation, system support, counseling curriculum, individual planning, and responsive services. So the hope was two years ago that they would be able to increase the score to 80%. They met that goal. They exceeded that goal because our current IIR score is at 89%. And we do believe that's because of some things that have been implemented, such as programs like the Signs of Suicide, hiring mental health professionals, really targeted curriculum work, and the creation of a program manual. Those have really helped the score rise. Goal two is by the end of last year, that the average effectiveness of priority curriculum lessons would be a 3.6. And so those priority curriculum lessons are on bullying in particular, and this goal was met. The average score was a 3.8. And then the last goal was that by the end of the 1819 school year, the percent of graduates considered success-ready would be 76%, and the percent that we have is 77. So our scorecard looks really good in that we are exceeding or meeting the goals in many of the areas. You can see the district IIR score. We are now in the advanced category percentage of success-ready graduates. We are at a five with plans to continue to move forward. The percent of juniors with identified career paths, we are near goal at 87%. The effectiveness of support groups is a 3.3, and so that'll show up in one of our next year's goals to work on. And the effectiveness of our priority curriculum lessons is at a 3.8. So again, in the advanced area. So goals for the next two years is, goal one would be by the end of the 2021 school year, our district IIR score will increase to 90%. So it's a little harder to keep making big gains once you get to a certain level, but we feel like 90 is something we can still attain. Goal two is by the end of 2021, the average effectiveness of support groups will be a 3.6. So it was a 3.3, and we think we can raise that to a 3.6. And goal three is that by the end of the 2021 school year, the percent of graduates considered success-ready will increase to 85%. That naturally works in with some of our work with Kaufman in that we are supposed to be at 90% in three years. So an 85 is a nice stair step where we think we should be in two, so we could make that 90 in three. Opportunities for improvement, that executive team met and kind of came up with some other areas that they really want to work on, which is continuing to strengthen those tiered supports for students in the areas of academic and behavior. Obviously, we're not going to stop our focus on college and career readiness. That starts from K all the way through 12th grade. You continue to utilize our mental health task force as an advisory council for that program. That's been a great task force that has led to some gains, particularly in our IIR score. Continued professional development specific to counselors, and we want to explore the expansion of social, emotional learning curriculum with students. It is being piloted now, and we wish to continue to expand that. Questions?
Is this information available to the community? Is it on our website and everything?
This presentation, I believe, is through Board Docs. So through that way, they could.
Do you know how many stakeholders actually look at that and take it in? I mean, because I think it, you know, it's very admirable, just the increases in the goals that we've met or that you have met. And, you know, I would like the community to, you know, make sure that they...
I'm not sure how many access, but yeah, I would agree. It's very great news. They've worked very, very hard on some very hard topics as a counseling team that are truly making some significant differences, I think, with our kids.
One of the things we're doing more of this year is trying to highlight individual staff members and programs and some of their successes. And so this group would be another group that we can continue to include in that, so that people understand what the role is and what the services they provide, so that if there's any questions or need, that parents can help access that.
Any other questions?
Thank you. That was a lot of, good job. All right, moving on to summer school recap. Dr. Volker.
Well, that was a tough group to follow. There was a lot of good news in the council program review, and that truly is great to see for our students and our community. Looking at our summer school, and we'll start with our enrollment history, we had another very successful summer program. You'll see a little bit of a dip in our enrollment at the elementary and middle level. I do believe that, and it kind of show in our survey results that had to do with the very interesting winter that we had last year that pushed the year almost all the way to the end of May. And then you'll see in the survey results, I think some people just wanted a break, which I totally understand. It did not happen in the high school. We grew at the high school level, and I believe that was due to online offerings and just expanding programming. We're going to definitely continue to do that. So as you look across, we still had very strong summer school enrollment in our district. If you continue to scroll down, we'll talk about the survey we sent out. I sent out a survey at the end of June and actually received 509 responses, which I was very pleased with. I think that's a very high return rate. So of those 509, we had 149 responded that did not have students attend summer school. Okay, so I asked them, first, very first question on the survey, "Did your child attend summer school or not?" And if they answer no, then the next question obviously is, "Why did you choose not to send your child to summer school?" So looking at that, 61% of those students who responded said, "My child just needed a break from school," which makes absolute sense. In the winter we had and all that, 17% said that did not work in their schedule, and 14% said the program offerings did not interest my child. I also asked for suggestions, comments regarding that, and some people gave me different thoughts, different ideas. A lot of people, you know, we can't control the weather or the schedule. Definitely not the weather. I can control the schedule, but can't control the weather. So we'll look at that, and we use all this information in our planning. So I will take this survey, the complete survey, and all this information, and our summer school planning team will start with it. We always do. We start with a reflection. So that's what we'll do here in the coming months. Believe it or not, that will probably start next month, summer school planning. So it's time to begin. So the first question, these are the 306 or so responses of the ones that actually attended summer school. And you'll see the results are very positive. When I look compared to last year, equally or more positive than we've seen in the past. So did they enjoy summer school? Quality of administration staff, keep scrolling down. The educational programming classes offered. And then the final question is just, what do they believe about the overall quality of the summer program? When you look at that and you take three and above, and even if you just want to take the 88, almost 89% that it gave it a four or five, that's a large group of people who believe that their child access a high-quality summer school program. So it's very encouraging, and we take these results very seriously. Because when we see results that we don't like on that, we're going to work to change our program to meet the needs of our students and our staff and our parents. Excuse me. So if you want to open the next document, we can talk a little bit about the financials. So it was another successful summer school program on the revenue side as well. You will notice a little bit of a new line item there called virtual instruction that really does account for a lot of the change in our actual revenue chart. So you'll see virtual instruction. We had students access over 400 courses of online learning, and it was a lot of great opportunities for kids. My child even being one of them. I know some of your children possibly accessed some online coursework. That was great, but there is a cost to that. But I do believe it was absolutely worth it in what we were able to provide our students and for the cost that we actually are output on that. So our net program revenue was still very strong, and we'll roll that into our overall budget. So just, once again, very excited about our summer school program. We're going to take these results, and we're just going to continue to grow it. Hopefully, we will not see the winter that we saw, and we'll be able to have a little space, and some of those families can take a quick vacation and then start summer school, because that really is kind of nice. Does anybody have any questions about our summer program?
Very good results. Thank you.
Yeah, I was very pleased. Thank you very much for your support.
I think our challenge will be just continuing to find things that our kids want to do for summer school.
Yeah, and we added some great programs, and we'll keep trying. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board policies.
So this is a group of about 14 policies for first reading. The vast majority were related to legislation that passed last spring that has a time commitment to instituting them into policy. So our policy service provided those, but we've had a few that we've adjusted ourselves in this group. Policy Review Committee met and reviewed these and are recommending them for first read tonight. They'll be back next month for your final approval, but I'd be glad to answer any questions either tonight or between now and the next month if you have any.
All right, moving along to action items, our 2018-19 audit. You don't look like Miss Bias.
Nope.[1003.73][1003.73](LAUGHTER). I'll let Brad introduce himself, but most of you know him, so.
For those of you who don't know, my name's Brad Steele. I'm an auditor with Westbrook &amp; Company. We performed your audit this year. I met with your Audit/Finance Committee and went over the audit in detail, but I'll be glad to answer any questions. Well, I've got a, what we call a presentation packet that I'm going to go through here that just kind of pulls out the opinions we had, some of the financial stuff in graphs, and I'll go through that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have also if you see something in the audit that I didn't put in here. The first thing I always want to point out, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. It means you had a clean audit. Your bonding company, DESI, those are going to be the first thing, first thing they look at is see if you had a clean audit, and you did. Your financial statements were fairly presented. This is a statement of activities. The reason I pull this up is you can see the governmental activities down the left-hand side with the expenditures, and then you can see your program revenues is specific to that particular activity, and you can see the true cost on the right. So on transportation, for example, you spent $4.7 million, but the true cost of transportation is about 3.8. Okay? This is your balance sheet, so it shows your cash in each of the funds. One thing I always point out is the special revenue fund or the teacher's fund is zero. That's typical. That's not unusual. Most all schools have that as zero, because that's where all your certified staff is paid with salaries and benefits, and then you transfer enough money to zero that out. So that's not uncommon. That's typically the way it is. This is your revenues and expenditures by fund, and you can see there your net change in fund balance. You had a very positive net change in fund balance this year, which is really good, good to build your reserves back up. This is your bonds, your lease participation certificates, and then direct borrowings, that's your copier leases. With the new accounting wording that changed this year, that was one of the new changes. Instead of copier lease, it's direct borrowing. So that's why that's in there, but that's just your copier leases. And then it shows your balance beginning of the year, additions, retirements, the balance at the end of the year, and then your amount due within one year. Now, the next three are your graphs, and we've put these graphs in. This is your revenue. This shows your revenues by source. And even though you can see the last five years, your revenues have changed quite a bit, your source of revenue stayed pretty consistent, and that's common. Most schools, their sources of revenue are going to play, going to stay consistent from year to year. This is the same type of graph with your expenditures. Again, you can see over the last five years, your expenditures have increased and changed a lot, but your object code or where the expenditures are going in your operating budget stayed pretty consistent. You know, your employee costs, your personnel costs are a little over 70% of your operating budget, again, which is pretty common for schools. This is probably the most important one we have, your reserve ratio. This measures how much your reserves in your operating funds, it's the general fund and the special revenue fund, compared to your operating expenditures. And in this case, you're at about 23%, which is up a little bit from last year, which is good. We'd like to see all our schools at 20% or above. So you're in very good shape there from a financial standpoint. And the average day of attendance increased this year. Again, that's another good sign. We have to give an opinion on compliance with specified Missouri laws and regulations. This is basically your budget, your attendance, your transportation, and they were all fairly stated. We noted no instances of noncompliance. There's that, none. We also look at your internal controls as a way to plan for our audit. We don't give an opinion on your internal controls, but if we see a material weakness or significant deficiency, we're going to bring that up. We didn't see any. We didn't identify any, so that's a good thing. You guys have some mitigating controls in place to lower that risk, and that's very good. We also had to do a major federal program audit and follow uniform guidance. And again, you're in compliance with all your federal programs. No findings in your federal programs, and that's kind of what this says here. The one that we tested, the federal program we tested was your food service, and everything came back well on your food service, so no findings there. You can see there on your financial statements, we had the unmodified opinion, which is what you want. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. You had an unmodified opinion in your major federal programs. And the one thing I always want to point out there at the bottom, it says Audit T Qualified as a Low-Risk Audit T. 99% of the school district in the state of Missouri is going to have that marked no. The only way it's going to be marked yes is if they didn't have any federal findings, which you guys didn't, but you have to be on the accrual basis of accounting to have that as a low-risk Audit T. And you guys are cash basis, which most 99% of the schools are, so that's not uncommon. But that's why that's no. It's nothing that you guys did wrong, but that's just marked no. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a great finance department.
You do. And it was a challenge this year for everybody because of the new coding issues. And there's some things, like she was talking about earlier, the sped FER is still not open. They can't even file it yet. So it's been a challenging for everyone, I think.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, on to our asphalt and concrete repair bid.
We need a motion on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the 2018-19 audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Sorry about that. Now we're on to asphalt and concrete repair bid with Dr. Petten Gill.
The most exciting part of the evening.
Indeed.
The district did seek bids for asphalt and concrete repair work for needed concrete and asphalt repair. We received bids from four vendors. Included in the bids were their unit cost for patchwork of the asphalt and concrete replacement. Attached to this, in Board Docs are both the quantities and the Google images of the patchwork. The work is needed at Brattle Ridge, Creekmore, Timber Creek, and then on this main campus. The work was accounted for in our capital projects planning in the current fiscal year, and Phillips Pavement was the low vendor that's available to complete the entire scope of the needed work. So that is my recommendation, is to go with Phillips. Glad to take any questions.
Have we worked with them before?
Yes, multiple times.
Satisfactorily.
Very good.
This was all within budget, what we had anticipated?
It was as anticipated.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the bid for Phillips paving for work addressing identified patchwork needs in the amount of $65,058.50 plus a 5% contingency for unforeseen construction conditions?
I move that we approve the bid as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Petten Gill.
Thank you.
All right, on to Cass County Kids' First Legislative Priorities.
So I don't know if Ruth wants to add to this, but we mentioned earlier during our recognition that she helped formulate the Cass County Kids' First Group some five years ago, when she came to me and suggested that we could maybe get all 10 Cass County school districts to agree on some legislative priorities. I thought, well, maybe. But we have been doing that now for four years. This is year number five. So we had three board representatives from three different school districts, along with superintendents for several school districts, meet and review what we'd done before. We made some revisions to that, and that's the list that you have before you. Some of our other organizations that we're part of have much longer legislative priorities. We try to focus on some of the key issues that we think are most important to us here in Cass County. And the beauty of this is hopefully with your approval tonight and the approval of the other 10 districts in the county, we'll have a unified group, and we're already scheduling events for next legislative session to, you know, have more discussions with our legislators about these issues and others that are important to us. So we've already had at least one district let me know that they've already approved them, so we're in the process of asking each of the 10 districts to approve them either this month or next month.
Yeah, we kept it pretty consistent with last year. Under school choice concerns, we put the first one there to include virtual schools so that we can have the same accountability standards for those. And then under support local control, we moved school calendar down to the bottom because unfortunately they passed what they did, but something could always come up. But we moved nonpartisan school board elections to keep those in April, because that will probably be back in the forefront. So we just want them to know we want it to stay in April as a nonpartisan election. Otherwise, everything's pretty much the same, consistent as we've been before, local control. So is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Cass County Kids' First 2020 Legislative Priorities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, guys. I've always appreciated your support in this area, and I won this award, but it's all of our work that's gotten it, so thank you. All right, next we have board policies.
So this is a second reading of eight policies that we shared with you last month, and again, it went through the policy review process as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but we're recommending them for approval.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the board policies as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, on to committee reports. Team Ray Peck met this month. Again, just looking at some support staff numbers and seeing how that's looking to see what they want to do there. That was about all that. I'm sorry? And innovation meeting, yes, we had that. Some great work and discussions going on there with Real World Learning. We have several business community members that have attended that meeting, and they've got some great insight as to what they see graduates needing to have to go into the workforce. So some great, great discussions that are happening in those committees. All right, on to superintendent's report.
Well, you may have noticed in the news this morning that APR reports, our annual performance reports, were released by the state, and it's very different this year. And then past years, they've always given us a composite score, a percentage, you know, out of the possible points, and we're typically in the 98% range each year. Well, this year, they've chosen to give it more standards, reporting based on individual standards, and not giving us an overall score. So you kind of have to look at each one of those individual areas and say, well, how did we do? And overall, we did extremely well, again, as a school district. We saw some nice improvements in math, which we shared with you last week at the work session on academic achievement, which was probably our weakest area last year, seeing that growth is good. All the other areas, we were, again, you know, up near the target goals they have for the state, so we're in really good shape there. If we had to take all that and convert it to a score like we would have done in previous years, again, we'd be in the mid to upper 90s again this year, but the state's not really reporting it that way. We also got our ACT results this week. We're a good half point above the state average again this year, and I think that's notable point above the state average again this year, and I think that's notable in that this is the first class that wasn't tested completely by the state. So this class, when they were juniors, did not have a statewide paid-for ACT assessment, but you, as a board, offered that as an option for our students, and it looks like we had about 87% of our kids roughly test on the ACT. So to see our score go up as much as it did on average while we still had that high participation rate, I think is a good sign. Well, later in the fall, we'll get another report related to ACT on our state report card from DESI. This one just reflects the last test they took, whereas the one we get later on on the report card gives us their best score. So the average goes up overall. So that's the one we use in our scorecard when we're tracking, so it'll even be higher than the 21.3 average that we have right now. So that's good news. The foundation was busy this week. They were out awarding classroom impact grants, over $10,000 into, to our teachers and throughout the district. That's on top of the $21,000 they gave to building grants at the beginning of the school year, so we appreciate their support. And I want to have everybody save the date for November 23rd for the Good Neighbor, Strong Community event. Belton High School is going to be the host this year. It's kind of a partner effort with us and Belton and other entities around the community, including the foundation. So hopefully you can carve out part of your day for November 23rd to attend that. Our fall activities are winding down. It's been a great fall for all of our activities, from the marching band all the way to the athletic teams and everything in between. Too many, too many to mention, but specifically, but I can just tell you, the commitment of our students and our coaches and sponsors and staff are tremendous, and it's been one of the best falls I've seen in my time here in terms of overall programs. Our parent teacher conferences, the high school's been held already for the first round, but now we're doing the split conferences. So in two weeks, we'll have the pre-K through 8 parent teacher conferences. Those are October 29th through 31st. And then next Tuesday is the Raymore Chamber Pumpkin Auction, which is a fundraiser the chamber puts together each year for scholarships for our seniors. So want to invite the community to that. I know it said today is the deadline for RSVPs, but they'll still take them tomorrow, or maybe even Monday if you ask. So Dr. Volker will be emceeing that event. So that concludes my report.
All right. Board of Education comments.
I would just like to say that, you know, with the release of the scores and the RAPR and our improvements, that's a testament to our staff and all the hard work that our teachers and staff put into everything. So want to recognize their efforts. Thank you all.
And thank you to all the community members who participated, volunteered, donated for the golf tournament Monday. You know, all of that goes right back to the teachers and students. So the district really appreciates all of their work in doing that. And it was a beautiful day. All right. Any other board comments? All right. Calendar of events, November 14th, we have a work session at 6:00 PM, and November 21st, a regular board meeting at 6:00 for closed and 7:00 for open. And if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
Thank you to all our students for here tonight.